I guess I am.
I heard it was starting about ten.
No.
Can't be too early.
But I don't.
Anybody else in the crowd?
I just don't want to see an urgent care doctor.
Oh, they said weather committee and I go, well, yeah, it was windy, but that's never stopped.
Hold on, talk with Ken.
I guess I am, of course.
Come on now.
I remember when my son, we lived in Illinois.
I have no choice.
He went out and he had a kid with two shirts under his uniform, you know, a turtleneck and, you know.
Still cold.
Oh, my gosh.
Welcome to my town.
He's left fielder.
He's sure.
Let me give it to your kid.
Dan Frank Towns.
His mom was cold.
It was like forty three when I was taking him going.
There he is.
We hear you, bud. We hear you.
All right.
And everybody else in this chamber can hear you as well.
Okay. It's him.
Michael, we good to go?
Ready, sir. There's a four or five second delay. Come on.
Josh, we're still seeing the logo screen up on the TV.
We've got a thirty second delay.
There we go.
We got it.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening to all of you. We appreciate you being here. If you would stand, the Vice Mayor will have her invocation and lead us into the prayer.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for your love and time hardship and sorrow, as well as in times of jeopardy. For the many gifts you have given us, we are truly grateful. We thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon our city, our people. We give thanks for our community, for those who serve in so many ways. May I ask your guidance as we discuss issues that affect the lives of our citizens? Please give us discernment, patience, mercy, and kindness as we make decisions with us. Amen.
Let's face the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, thank you. Of course, item on our agenda is a special presentation. It's the proclamation dealing with child abuse prevention month, and we've got some folks here from the Exchange Club, and I'd like to have all of them join me at the podium if you would please. He's gonna come. You tell him to. I'll guarantee you, he's moving now, isn't he? Came up here, didn't he?
I did.
I know. It's a pleasure for me to read the proclamation. Whereas the City of Pecosin applauds the Exchange Club of Pecosin for its dedicated work in the prevention of child abuse in our community, and whereas the City of Pecosin commends Exchange Club of Pecosin for its promotion of ongoing programs in our community which are designed to help prevent child abuse, and whereas the City of Pecosin stands firmly on the side of prevention of any type of abuse and believes no child should endure verbal, emotional, or physical abuse for any reason, and whereas the National Exchange Club adopted the prevention of child abuse as its national project in nineteen seventy-nine in response to a request by its national president, who, as a physician, noticed an increase in child abuse cases in the medical practice, since then, April has been designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the City of Pecosin supports and encourages all of our residents and community leaders to wear blue each Monday in April in observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Now, therefore, I, Gordon C. Hesel Jr., Mayor of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of April to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Pecosin in recognition of our commitment to healthy, happy children, and to help eliminate child abuse in our community, and to support the efforts of the Exchange Club of Pecosin and all others who observe this important cause in their mission to bring awareness of the tragic problem to the forefront, and to help make our community a stronger and a more loving city where children will be able to grow and thrive without fear. What a great, what a, a great initiative this is, and we thank all of you for participating in that, and would you like to say a few words?
Mayor Hassel, members of the City Council, City Manager Wheeler, I'm Steve Geiger, President of the Exchange Club of Pecosin, and we're the largest club in Virginia, and I might say the best. And on behalf of the Pecosin Exchange Club, thank you for acknowledging and promoting our focus of the month of April on child abuse prevention. We all understand the great value of our children in ensuring a bright future for Pecosin and our nation. We also recognize that many challenges our children face today are different and in some ways more difficult, and they may also result in abuse. I want to acknowledge the outstanding leadership of our members, and most importantly, our chairperson, Pat Green, and her committee. The members here this evening that represent part of her committee are Sis Ambrose, right here, our treasurer, as it turns out, also, and my lovely wife, Gaye Geiger. This year, not the least, I must mention, we're proud sponsors of our new high school Excel Club, and these have a wonderful sponsor, and many of you know her, and you should know her, she's Becky Morrison, and their, and their club president, the capable, and many of you know her, Alyssa White. Now, there are thirty-eight members in this club the first year, and they're doing some wonderful things. Our activities for the whole club this month include planting blue pinwheels by the signs that you all know as we welcome coming into the city and the city marquee displaying a child abuse prevention message, bags containing literature to be handed out at the food bank, and also at the library with parents and children, tips for the parents each day in April that are on our website for Facebook, so those are very helpful, and you should look at those, and new to this year and of many things, the Excel Club is gonna place a tree out in the hallway outside the library, just down the hall, and they're gonna hand out pins in the afternoons, and there'll be pins on the trees that are, I don't see them, not yet on our, not yet on our lovely outfits tonight. It's not April yet, of course, but we wouldn't want to use them too early. So, anyway, they'll be there, and please help yourself if the, if the children are at school, which they will be until the afternoon. Again, thank you for your support, sir, and Pat, would you like to say a couple of words?
You said it well. You said it well. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, let me, let me present you with the proclamation before you guys get away.
Thank you very much, sir.
And again, we appreciate you being active in this cause. That's just a great thing to do. Really is. We appreciate it. Thank you.
It's our pleasure. Thank you, sir.
All right, next item on our agenda is our audience for visitors. It is at this time that if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on any issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you, and I have a speaker card from Mr. Steve Pappas. Would you like to go first?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Miss you down the hall.
Well, first, thank you, sir. One thirty-seven Fremore Drive, Pecosin, Virginia, proudly, and yes, you might miss me. I appreciate that, and just so you know, I've been retired now for two months, and it's the first time I put a tie on, so you guys are very important to this little speech I'm giving here. As you all know, on the mayor, council, members of council, and Mr. Randy Wheeler, the dredging of Lambs Creek has been ongoing for some time. There are, in the packet that we had, some four different memorandums dated, two from twenty fifteen, one from twenty seventeen, and one from twenty twenty-one, and they all talk about it at different pricing levels. These levels range from one point two six one million up to two million, and some include five Pecosin ancillary coves or dredge paths or creek coves, and then I guess if the request of Pecosin, one of them is dropped off on Fremore Drive, and that's kind of what brings us here. So, if you'll indulge me, we, the four property owners of Fremore Drive, listed below, and we've signed our names and given you our addresses, ordering Lambs Creek, would like to make our concerns known as you consider the proposed dredging project with your county. We've lived here for many years, some of us in excess of forty-five plus years. After a careful word-by-word review and analysis of the twenty pages that constitute this agenda topic, and by the way, I need to stop and say, you've got so much to read. This was a lot, and this was the only thing we had to read, but we wrote, read every word and took notes. We, the aforementioned waterfront property owners, would like you to know that we are opposed to being considered for inclusion in the proposed special service district, or SSD, or the special service tax overlay district, depending on which municipality's definition of that taxable rule you subscribe to. Our reasons for your consideration are, one, we four derive zero benefit from the dredging. We have sufficient water at our private pierheads and direct access to the main channel. Absorbing both the increased cost for the special services district tax and the inevitable increases in future property tax assessments would produce a significant financial burden for us as senior citizens. Dredging of Lambs Creek will cause irreparable financial loss to individual oyster farmers, as well as create environmental concerns for the creek. Additionally, we have concerns of currently disregarded wake damage, which will only increase after dredging. As noted numerous times within the various memos contained in the board packet, Lambs Creek has a northeast orientation and is subject to significant accretion. That's quote, end quote. This gradual filling by layers is exacerbated by the loss of the two natural barriers, or jetties, that extended westward from the causy property of Pecosin and eastward from the Riggins property of York County. And if you go in the hallways back here downstairs, you can see aerial photos from way back when, and when I moved back here, those, you couldn't see the channel. Those have abated so significantly at this point, there is nothing that keeps, keeps damaging wave action from coming in to Lambs Creek and silt and debris with it. So, with no plan, current plan to reinstate these essential barriers, Lambs Creek will not only fill more quickly, but the properties facing the mouth of Lambs Creek in both municipalities will be subjected to destructive forces of increased wave action. The number of ancillary channels was modified from those originally identified, and you can see the chart on the next page. In her January twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen memo, Ms. Drake of York County, the engineer, states that at the request of Pecosin, she was asked to drop the ancillary channel that would serve the north side of Fremore Drive. The chart shows you that initially she had five Pecosin side alternative dredge areas, but she was asked to drop the Fremore Drive. And as such, she did so. The specific property addresses and numbers of the properties deemed to be north-facing were not identified. The chart below, I'll show you on the next page, illustrates a difference of twenty-eight taxable properties in Pecosin between the twenty twenty, the twenty fifteen version of the memo that you have in your original board packet, which, and four ancillary in twenty twenty-one with five ancillary channels, many of which are associated with the north-facing properties on Fremore Drive, which have been eliminated. We, the undersigned property owners, respectfully request that Pecosin City Council also remove our four Fremore Drive waterfront properties from the special tax district, all of which have west or west-northwest-facing piers, as they have direct access to the main channel and sufficient depth. Of course, you can see the chart there that kind of shows you the four memos, and under the ancillary channels, you see it's dropped from five to four at our request as a town, city, and then it goes on, and you can see that the pricing jumps all over the place, as you might expect. Number seven, the report states that the potential starting point for dredging be opposite Ocean Breeze Drive. We submit for your consideration that there's no need to dredge the main channel closer to the creek mouth than at the intersection of the Hamilton Circle Cove, the fourth Pecosin ancillary channel, and the main channel. See attached annotated map, please. Before you vote to proceed with this project, we believe that every single impacted property owner should be fully aware of the additional taxes that will be imposed on them, as well as the additional costs associated with every aspect of dredging before they are asked to vote for or against the dredging project. In summary, we ask that you consider the following: exempt property owners from the taxation overlay that already have ample depth and direct access to the main channel; compensate owners for damage done to oyster beds; restore the buffer areas on both sides of Lambs Creek in the vicinity of Darden Drive with concrete barriers to reduce wave action and flooding of properties down Lambs Creek during major storms. And then, in closing, we trust that you too wish for your properties to be removed from the SSD taxation plan if your properties were located where ours are with plenty of depth and access to the main channel. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Will you ask any other speakers to speak to talk more directly into the microphone, please?
I didn't understand a word you said.
Ask the speakers to directly into the mic, so we'll have to hear.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, all right, Bud. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on. We have approval of our minutes, and I think we, from the work session on March fourteenth, and from our regular session March, March fourteenth, I think we can do this together.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the work session of March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and our regular session of March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Bud. For a second. Someone adopt a minute?
Second, but I have some comments.
Okay, we'll hear.
On page three, near the bottom, a quote attributable to me, I went back to listen to it, and it really isn't exactly what I said, but I talked about councilman Fai stated that the by, many bylaws state that, according to Roberts Rules, members are required to give a reason for abstaining, and what I said was they're required to vote, and then unless there is a, and as I said, it was a conflict of interest that would put you in a financial well-being that no one else would, versus the legal or financial conflict thing, so if you can make that change, I would appreciate that.
Okay, Bud.
I'll admit my.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Kemp, please.
Councilman Andrews. Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
I was not at the meeting, but I reviewed the tape and read the minutes, and I believe the minutes reflect what happened at the meeting, so I'll say aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. It is an ordinance, amending the Code of Ordinance of the City of Pecosin, Virginia by amending Chapter Six, Article Three, signs in the right of way.
Mr. Wheeler, any comments?
Uh, no, sir. Mr. Horton will represent the staff tonight, and between he and I, we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, Wally.
Thank you. I'm hoping this mic works a little better than the one up front for Mr. Southall.
I can hear you fine.
This is a request for a technical amendment to Chapter Six, Article Three of the City Code, not the zoning ordinance, referring to the signs in the right of way. If you'll remember, back on, back in January, January twenty-fourth, the City Council did initiate an amendment to allow what we're calling subdivision identification signs within the city right of way, and I believe the language that you've got in the approval motion is the same that you looked at that night with one exception, and that is, when we went to the planning commission, excuse me, they did vote five to zero to recommend approval with one additional sentence added to Section six dash one one four one, which reads, quote, "The monument shall be constructed with materials of a permanent nature, being masonry, stone, and similar appearing materials," and that's really just an appearance thing, you know, you certainly want the sign to, to look decent. The ordinance amending Chapter Six, Article Three has been amended to reflect, again, as I said a minute ago, the requested changes of City Council and the additional sentence of the planning commission, and with that, I, well, one other thing I'd like to point out is that although Legacy of Pecosin brought this forth, and you do have a sheet that shows the pictures of their, their sign, I want to make it clear that this is for the benefit and can be taken advantage of anybody else, particularly in future subdivisions. There's just not a lot of subdivisions out there now that can take advantage of it, but perhaps in the future it will be.
Okay, thank you. Wally, any questions of Wally before we open the public hearing?
Yes, I have some. First, I couldn't find the reference to the January twenty-fourth meeting. I don't have a problem with going for it now, but I know the mayor made a comment about having it and send it to the planning commission, which we did, so I have no problem there, but I just could not find it anywhere in our minutes. there, but I just could not find it anywhere in our minutes from the 24th of January. First question is, is there any grandfathering of existing signs in these subdivisions in the city?
There would not be any grandfathering because there are no signs like this in subdivisions right now within the city. I mean, we're not changing the code to really affect existing signs.
Right. Okay, I'm pretty sure there are some. Okay. Is there a time limit to change those that are not in compliance? I live in Hunt Woods. There's a wooden sign that's kind of hidden by Rose Bush right now, but it's basically attached to the fence that's by McPherson's garage. Obviously doesn't comply with this. The only thing you can see is the H in the hunt.
This would not require anyone to reconfigure their existing signs. It would add an additional signage option for a certain qualifying type of developments, so it wouldn't go backwards to require anyone to do anything different.
Okay, because it talks like signs would be taken down.
It's an additional permitted sign, not, right.
Okay. And bigger question, which you probably already answered, subdivisions are not required to have signs, if you're saying that, so I'm assuming they don't have to have a sign if they don't want to.
They don't have to have a sign, no.
Okay, that's good.
And certainly not a sign in the right of way, like is talked about here.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Now, most subdivisions have one sign.
Any other comments? Any questions of Wally? Thank you, Wally. Well done, sir. Okay, let's open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone in our audience that would like to speak to the amending of this ordinance. See anyone, so we'll close the public hearing, and we need some action from council.
I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pecosa, Virginia by amending Chapter Six, advertising Article Three signs in public right of way.
All right, thanks, sir.
Second.
I have a second. Ms. Kemp?
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to new business. First item, consideration of draft letter to York County pertaining to the proposed Lamb's Creek dredging project. I'm not going to have any comments on this tonight, you know, we've, all of us have talked about this this past week. Just so the public understands that the letter that was drafted, we're not going to act on it tonight, and you'll hear it in the motion in just a second. Bud?
I move that we postpone this item until a work session can be held at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. Any questions, any comments? If not, Kemp, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. The second item is a resolution directing that public notice be given of council's intent to receive bids for the sale of publicly owned property located within the unapproved portion of Coeson Avenue. Randy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the beginning of the formal process to receive publicly bids for the reference property. The way that the process works, assuming that you approved this resolution, is then we will publicly notice that this property, that we are entertaining sealed bids for this property, and then persons that are interested have the opportunity to submit a sealed bid to the clerk prior to the next meeting, and then we'll have a public hearing at your next meeting, during which time the clerk will open and read aloud any and all sealed bids we received. That will be part of the public hearing, also as part of the public hearing. Anyone that has submitted a bid, or wishes to speak to any bid, or about the potential sale of the property, is welcome to speak as well. And then following the closing of the public hearing, it has been our tradition, and one I think is very good practice, to then postpone it for two more weeks to allow the public and everyone else to have an opportunity, be knowledgeable of what the bids were, in case they weren't just sitting here when they got read. So this is the first of the three formal steps.
Okay. All right, Randy, thank you. Any questions to the manager? Okay, there's a resolution there, we need some action by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution to the council of the City of Pecosa, Virginia, directing that public notice be given of the council's intention to receive bids for the sale of publicly owned property located within the unimproved portion of Pecosa Avenue.
All right, thank you, Bud.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made, and second, we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments, any questions? If not, Ms. Kemp?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Let's move on to item three. It's a resolution of council to imply an assessment ratio to the value of certain automobiles and trucks as authorized by the Code of Virginia 58.1-350, excuse me, 1-3503B for the calendar tax year beginning January 1, 2022. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, Tanya is prepared to present.
Okay, anytime.
I'd also note for you that our commissioner is here as well, if you have a question of him.
That's correct. And I'm going to use the same as Wally, so Southall can hear us appropriately while we're at the mic. But tonight, we have a resolution presented in front of you for the calendar year of January 1, 2020, to December 31, 2022, sorry, 2022. This is due to enlarge the fact that there's a shortage on new vehicles. Everybody's aware that, you know, we get shipments from China, microtrips weren't received, so therefore, if you have a used car, your value actually appreciated versus depreciated as it has in the past. So based on this, we have found that our values on our used properties have gone up extremely. So based on this, we're recommending to council to lower the assessed value of those certain property, certain automobile, trucks, to 90% versus 100% of what the commissioner is allowed to do. And so in order for the commissioner to do this prior to April 1st, we need to take action tonight, because this will affect the billing that citizens receive June 5th, as well as the billing they receive December 5th.
Tanya, thank you, well done. Any questions of Tanya?
I have a question. Will the 10% from 100 to 90, would that be enough to, so we're not just really taking advantage of our citizens?
The answer to that is no, sir. It is not, it is not designed to equalize the rate.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Tanya, thank you, well done. All right, we have a resolution. Someone prepare with a motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution of council to apply an assessment ratio to the value of certain automobiles and trucks as authorized by the Code of Virginia, Section 58.1-3503B, for the calendar taxing year beginning January 1, 2020.
All right, thank you, Bud.
Second.
Motion made, second, we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments? Any more questions of Tanya? Okay. Ms. Kemp?
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Item four, under new business, a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a contract for professional auditing services with Brown Edwards CPAs LLP. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to recognize Lee Etheridge, our finance director, who will walk us through this item.
Okay, great. Hey, Lee?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, mayor, council, citizens. I bring before you tonight a resolution to enter into auditing services. The audit contract performed by Cherry Beckett, LLP, for the city, school board, and economic development authority, did not automatically renew at the end of the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. In accordance with the city's purchasing policies and the Virginia Public Procurement Act, the city requested and advertised for proposals for these services. The city received three proposals, and a committee of school and city personnel interviewed all three firms. After careful consideration, the committee has recommended that the city contract with Brown Edwards CPAs LLP for an initial term of three years with two additional one-year renewal options. The cost of the audit service fees for the first year is $89,500. The increase in fees from the prior year audit contract is attributed to the increased reporting requirements for the recently issued statements for pension and other post-employment benefits and leasing by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Please find the attached resolution for your consideration, which will authorize the city manager to enter into the auditing services contract with Brown Edwards CPAs LLP. I respectfully request council consider this motion, and I will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Well done, Lee, thank you. Any questions of Lee?
Yes, I have one. What you read is pretty much what we got, but there's one sentence left out.
Yes.
Was that left out for a reason?
No, no, I just don't read everything in its entirety.
Okay, that's fine.
No reason there.
Because I'll read it, because I think the way it's written, assuming that it's correct, that the sentence that was left out has implications on us as we consider a standard operating procedures for our appointment of persons to boards. And that was, "The committee felt that after numerous years of using the same auditing services, that a fresh perspective on the financial processes of an organization can add value to fiscal processes. Internal controls and assuring governmental standards are followed continuously," which is something I think that when we go about making our SOP, that we take into consideration when it comes to the reappointment of people.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Lee, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
All right, we got a motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for professional auditing services with Brown Edwards CPAs LLP.
Second.
Motion made, second, we adopt the resolution. Any more comments, questions? Okay, Ms. Kemp?
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Item five, it's a resolution making appointments to the Economic Development Authority. Someone prepared with some names?
I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Economic Development Authority with the following names inserted: Alan E. Meats, Donald F. Booth, Jr. Both terms will expire March 31, 2026.
Okay.
I'll second that, and have some comments if it's okay.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
In doing my homework, I was looking at the members of the Economic Development Authority, and Alan is the chairman right now. He's been on that board for 12 years. Donald is vice chairman, and he's been on there for 12 years. They have one other member who's been on there for 14 years, but they have four members that have been over there just over one year. So I think it's important that we do approve that these two gentlemen to continue with the leadership and keep the Economic Development Authority staffed with qualified and experienced people.
Hey, any other comments? All right, there's a resolution, we need a motion. Get one?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Keith, you're right. Okay, so are there any further questions, any comments? If not, Ms. Kemp?
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Item six, it's a resolution making appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mr. Green, I think you've got some names?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with the following names inserted: For the Central Precinct, Crystal Hauser; Eastern, Stephen C. Forrest; Western, Eden R. Harris; At Large, Judith G. Massey; and the other at large, Christine Schultz. All terms will expire March 31, 2025.
Okay, you got a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made, and second, any comments from anyone?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Similarly, Steve Forrest is the vice chairman, and he's been on there since 2017. Eden is the current chairperson, appointed back in 2018. Judy's been on, she's good experience of 2007. They have one member that was appointed way back in 1996, one member in 2027, and two members in 2020. So again, I think we have a good mix here of experience, as well as new people on this board, and I wholeheartedly endorse the recommendations or the motion put forth by Councilman Green.
Okay, so we have a motion made, and we had a second. Ms. Kemp?
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. Commissioner, city manager?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Okay. Council directors, agenda?
I have to go before Bud tonight. I'm not used to that. What would Bud say? I wanted to thank the citizens for speaking tonight. I always like it when citizens get involved and make the effort to come up and make their position known for things that are happening in their community. I'm really glad that we're going to have a work session on that. I think it's clearly important to the citizens, so it's important that we give that some time, I think. Thanks for the exchange club, for all the work you do. Our city's made better by all our volunteer organizations that we have. And thank you to the citizens watching at home. Bud would say that, he'll probably, but that's all I have.
Okay, Bud?
Yeah, Janet did a great job of starting off, because that's about the way I would also. And I do agree with her, and I encourage all the citizens to pay careful attention to their city government. It's very important.
Thank you, Bud. Hope you feel better.
I'm fine, thank you.
David?
Thank you, Gordon, I have no comments.
Okay, Bud? No comments, sir. Keith?
Yes, last week I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the Board of Zoning Appeals and listen to how they conduct their business, just trying to get to know everybody. And I was amazed. I thought they did an outstanding job. The individuals of Melvin Emerson, Russell Treacy, Mark Kramer, Stephen Hahn, and Ryan Holloway did an excellent job. Not only did they come across as being knowledgeable, but they were, they felt caring. I know the persons that they made recommendations for and against probably weren't happy with